In 2002 and in 2011, the Department of Children and Families had been the focus of reform efforts previously. The 2014 state legislative session is also debating reforms to Florida's child protective policies. Carol Marvin Miller is still with us. Mary Ellen Kloss with the Miami Herald also joins us. Mary Ellen, what are the legislative proposals that lawmakers are deliberating and possibly could vote on before the session wraps up the first Friday in May?
Well, as you mentioned, Tom, we have two weeks left. The legislature took this week off, but we've got two weeks left, and this is where all the heavy-duty, hard work comes in. Both of them have done some very, very impressive work, putting together two bills that are very comprehensive in looking at changing the way the state deals with child abuse investigations particularly. And just a brief summary of some of this, because remember, we've got two weeks left, so that means that there's a big chance they will be changed. It's my understanding, for example, that the Senate's bill is going through a very substantial rewrite as we speak. But the bottom line is that the goal is to really improve the quality of child abuse investigations. And by increasing the qualifications of the child abuse investigators, they use the term "professionalizing" the industry. There is some provisions to give higher education requirements, offer some education rebates and loans to incentivize people to get these higher degrees. There is a lot of work being done in the bills to direct DCF to do, as the secretary mentioned, this immediate investigation to give the agency more feedback and significant feedback in terms of what's happening, what are their patterns, and are there things that they can do to perhaps change policy quickly? There is also some reporting requirements, additional efforts to kind of root out the causes and rapidly determine some of the reasons that these child abuse deaths are occurring. And there's also a provision to address something where the state is now facing a lawsuit, and that is dealing with medically complex children. So that's just a very highlight of a 200-page bill.
It's a long bill. It's a long laundry list of goals and, some would argue, opportunities for reform. What's different this time, though? In 2002, then-Governor Bush convened a Blue Ribbon Panel. In 2010, there was an internal review within DCF that led to more than a dozen, more than two dozen different internal reforms. What's different this time?
Well, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's just, it's the same in that they're words on a piece of paper. And what's going to change is the evidence behind the words. And that, I think, will evidence itself in where they put money. We've just been through a recession, and DCF faced cuts just like every other agency. And in fact, I think the argument could be made that it sustained more substantial cuts, and that was very painful. And so we not only are pulling ourselves out of restoring the cuts, but figuring out, are we going to improve upon that?
The legislators who are joining us, welcome to both of you. Democratic Senator Eleanor Solbel, thank you so much, ma'am, for joining us, and Republican Representative Eric Fresson. Senator, let me begin with you. To Mary Ellen's point, where are you going to put the money?
We're going to put the money where it's needed. I believe that there will be money put for the CPIs, that there will be money put into services. And we're looking at the budget side by side with the governor's recommendations, the House's recommendations, and I believe that the Senate President and Senate leadership, including myself, which is a bipartisan effort, are going to do the right thing by the children of Florida.
The Senate proposal calls for $33.5 million. How much of that would you like to go to investigators, and how much of it would you like to go directed toward services?
That's a very good question. I don't know where you got the number 33 million, because the Senate President has not yet made the allocation to DCF.
What would you like that allocation to be?
Oh, I'd like it to be at least 50 million. I'd like to go for the highest number I could possibly get, because there is definitely a demand for services. There's definitely a demand for professionalization of the staff of DCF, and it needs to have thorough revamping and change at this particular time. And I think funding will help us.
Representative Fresson, the $50 million hopeful figure that Senator Solbel mentioned would restore half of the cuts that the agency saw this fiscal year. Are you willing to support that number?
Yeah, then, first of all, thank you so much for—
I'd like you to pull the microphone a little bit closer, so the back of the room can—you—thank you, sir.
I'm willing to support whatever number those that actually know about this issue a little bit more than I do think is the right number. What I can tell you is this, that whether it's 50 million or 40 million, any amount of money improperly appropriated and improperly spent really doesn't do anything. So I think, to Carol's point, I think when you look at this issue and you realize how layered it is and how—better? There we go. All right.
Thank you.
And you see how complex it is, even when it comes to budgeting. It's not all about the department. So when you start looking at services for drug addiction, for spousal abuse, for victims of spousal abuse or domestic violence, there are a lot of portions in the budget that also provide funding for those services. I know for a fact in the Health and Human Services budget, that separate—we've put additional dollars for domestic violence treatment centers and drug addiction centers. So I would like to see what the allocations end up looking like in its totality, and not just to the department, because I think the department's focus should be the professionalization of the services and of the caseworkers themselves, who are the first line of defense. But when we talk about all these other layered services that need to be added to the mix, including drug prevention, including addiction treatment, including spousal and domestic abuse issues, those are other aspects of the budget that I think we need to look at in total and see, is there a deficiency in those silos as well? And if there is, let's make sure that we fund those, so that those that are providing those services can properly do it. I don't think it's all about throwing a bunch of money at the department, when at the end of the day, a lot of these services that should be provided aren't really in the purview of the department's, you know, responsibility. I do think, however, that whether 400 boots on the ground or 600 boots on the ground are sufficient, that's for—I'm waiting, you know, it's for the professionals and the department and those that are here in this room right now to tell us, is 400 enough? If it's not, should we put more on the ground? But the function of the department should be that. It should be to make sure that there are enough caseworkers, enough professional caseworkers, to make sure that the files are open, that they're open competently, and that the information contained in those files puts safety first and not just being able to cycle out a file one way or another. So it's impossible for me to tell you whether or not 30, 40, 50, or 100 million is the right number, but I think it's definitely whatever ends up getting appropriated, whatever the Senate President or the Speaker allocate for this portion, let's make sure that we distribute it in a way that will provide the most reliable services that are needed for these families.
As we've said, as we said, this is a community conversation, and we do have a question from the audience.
My name is Brittany. I'm a guardian at Lightem. And as guardian at Lightem's, we are trained to believe that abusive and neglectful parents can be rehabilitated through therapy and parenting classes. My question is, is there actual data to show that this is the case, that parents who violently abuse their children can become safe guardians? Or is the Miami Herald's investigation evidence that rehabilitated parents are the exception rather than the rule?
It's a very good question. And there, to be honest with you, there are people in the room who are better qualified to answer it than me, but I will give it up. Dr. Lambert there is better qualified, and Mr. Walker over there from BSO can answer this question better than I can. I think that there are families that can be mitigated and ameliorated. A parent with a drug addiction can be led toward recovery, though all the available evidence that I'm aware of suggests that only about 30% of folks who enter drug treatment are clean and sober within a year. Full recovery is one of the most difficult processes known to humankind. And even if you are clean and sober—and I'm sorry, Judge Cohen is better qualified. Sorry about that. If you are clean and sober eight months from now, that doesn't mean that you will be clean and sober a year or 18 months from now. I will also tell you that I am told from sources whom I trust, that there are some dysfunctions that are so grave, that are so dangerous, that you would be ill-advised to ever consider that parent to be risk-free around children. And among those are a parent who would batter a child around the head, resulting in a skull fracture; a parent who would so violently batter a baby in the midsection so as to rupture a spleen or a liver. A person who would do that to a baby may never be safe around another baby.
The—I'm going to keep the microphone up here in the front row, because I want to ask someone in the front row. So if we can bring the microphone back to the front row, we'll have another question, because this conversation in regards to addiction and treatment speaks directly to Representative and Senator, what we were speaking about earlier, in terms of the allocation of the between boots-on-the-ground, aka investigators for the department, and those community-based services that are so key in order to address the source, in all cases, many cases, the source of the troubles in a troubled home. Representative?
Yeah, and I wanted just to take that opportunity of that question, of the premise of the question, to address something that I wanted to make sure I didn't leave here without addressing, because Carol mentioned it already, and even though—I'm not going to say that it is the driving force behind the department or behind our system of child welfare, I do think it is indisputable that the concept of family unification and keeping families together certainly led to a lot of these issues. And I think we have to, of course, as a result of this hemorrhaging situation that we had and kind of systemic failures, we have to have a 200-page bill on boots-on-the-ground to make sure that we can at least put a plug in the hole, so that we can stop some of the spillover. But at the end of the day, at some point, whether it's this year or next year, but certainly in the short term and in the near future, we have to really have a robust conversation about whether or not this concept that seems to be logical and that seems to feel good about family unification and keeping families whole is truly the best philosophical approach to take to this, because there's a huge value in the biology and the value of a parent and a biological parent. But if you look at that, and I, as a parent myself, nobody could ever love and want to protect my child more than I can, but my biology and my chemistry are clear. They're not muddled with drugs, they're not muddled with mental health issues. And at the end of the day, that biological parent, yes, in the grand concept of things, nobody can want to love and/or protect that child more, but you have to have clear biology. You have to have clear chemistry. And if you are addicted to drugs, your intentions, no matter how good they may be, can't actually be followed through in a way that is safe for that child. And if we don't have that conversation—I really do agree with Carol, whether it's conscious or not, the concept of family unification has gone into the system, and I think we really have to have a conversation about that and change that culture and make sure that safety, both in policy, in approach, and in funding, is truly the first thing.
Well, we did hear from the agency that safety was a priority. We heard it from the Deputy Secretary earlier in this town hall. Senator Solbel, from your perspective, the family preservation as a philosophy, does that need to be addressed in policy from the legislature?
It needs to be addressed in policy. I've read the law, and I saw that it was not written that it should be in the best interest of the child. And I think we sent a confusing message to the CPIs, that, yeah, we should protect the child, but we should keep the family together. So what does a CPI do? They try to do both, and both fail. Both fail. We have changed, working with the House, and I personally believe my insistence, that it should be the best interest of the child. I will tell you that we have had hours and hundreds of input from the community out here. And the bill that we have in place is—the basic bill, we still have, Mary Ellen, and we've tweaked it to make some changes, because more people keep giving us input. I'm really happy that many, many people in the state of Florida have put this on the front burner because of the Miami Herald series. Everybody is talking about the most vulnerable kids in our society. And we're going to have a very good bill. We pulled it last week, because we found more interest, more input, more needs that needed to be addressed from the get-go. And one of the biggest issues that I've been focusing on is the quality of the workforce. There's tremendous turnover in DCF, which is not addressed previously. The morale is low. And one of the issues I focused on was the, who are the, who are the people working for DCF? There are a lot of do-gooders, people believe that they can make a difference with our kids. I believe that we should have more social workers who are actually skilled to help us with these very, very difficult problems.
So to be clear, Senator, you would like to require a certain percentage of caseworkers to have a college degree in social work?
Yes, yes.
And is the [inaudible] there to attract the quality of the workforce that would be necessary for those degreed candidates to find that job financially attractive?
Well, just like firefighters fight fires, social workers deal with social issues. They are trained from the get-go, the social workers. They do a 500-hour internship, 500s. They come to work, they come to the job ready to work. They do not need to be trained. Also take an ethical oath, that they will uphold the group that they belong to and do the right thing. They also have a network of people that they are familiar with that could provide services. It's very nice that people want to be do-gooders, but I think that other fields should be considered. Not all the people who work for DCF need to be thrown out, and we should start from scratch. There are a number of people who work for the agency who are very good. On the other hand, we want to make the agency better. We want to professionalize it, so that somebody sees a kid who has done something wrong, and the kid is beaten, and the father is asleep, and, you know, taking drugs, or there's an animal that's dead in the house, that you look at the whole situation, the whole constellation, you just don't focus on the incident. So I believe a social worker comes with that kind of preparation. So that's why I support that.
The second thing—first about social workers as child protective investigators. I am less convinced that we need to go to that model than I am convinced that we need to find a way to encourage critical thinking among frontline workers. And—by that I mean, you cannot take a child who has sustained a depressed skull fracture, as Logan Hancock did a few months ago, and place that child back in the home of his mother and father with a safety plan that says that the mother and father can't leave the child with anyone else, when you know that the mother and father were the two prime suspects in cracking the baby's skull. About a month or two after that child was returned, his skull was cracked again, and he died. And a person who is extremely well-versed in critical thinking, a person who has the ability to stand up to his or her attorney, a person who has the ability to stand up to his or her boss, a person who has the ability to shout from the rooftop without regard to the consequences, that a baby will never be safe when given back to the person who cracked his skull, that is the person that I want in that job. And one more point regarding the family preservation. As a general philosophy, I have no issue with it. But in order to implement such a policy, you have to have an extremely reliable risk assessment tool, and the people who use that risk assessment tool who have critical thinking skills. If the tool itself grades out a child at high risk as being at low or moderate risk, it is ineffective and it will leave children in harm's way. If a risk assessment tool tells you that a child with a cracked skull, whose parents are drug addicts, is at low or moderate risk, it is a faulty risk assessment tool. And what I'm saying is, these philosophies cannot be viewed in a vacuum. They are fraught with consequences. And the only way that they are reliable, and the only way that they will leave children safe, is if all the policies and procedures and rules and legislation and supervision and oversight, all of those things must be robust, or any philosophy will fail.
We have another question from the audience that is somewhat related to the philosophy of family preservation, asking about taking a child out of the home. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mary, and I've been reading a lot about this series, as well as a lot that's been going on within Florida's DCF system. I'm from the West Coast, so things are a little bit different in terms of family preservation. But anyway, my question is, in this shift to protecting the child first and foremost, does this mean children can and will be taken before investigation? Or will they try to investigate and develop the facts before taking action?
You cannot remove a child without cause. You can't.
It's part of the process, is the investigation.
But you can't allow the investigation—that the child remains in danger while you cross two or three additional Ts. One of the things that we've seen done routinely is that you will see a child who clearly is in danger, but you will wait all 60 days before you take any action. And then the only action that occurs is a referral to voluntary drug treatment or a referral to anger management that the family then ignores or rejects. And were I to make a recommendation, and that's not entirely my job, one recommendation I would make is that when a child is at high risk, you cannot allow drug-addicted or violent parents to refuse help, treatment, and supervision. You can't. You must file a petition, you must send that child before one of these lovely ladies here, the judges in the room, and you must allow the judge to order that family to comply with services and supervision.
So the question is regarding the order of the process?
I think it's—
So—yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're getting into the part—we're getting into the courtroom now, to some degree, and we do have some judges here. Judge Rosa Figueroa of the 11th Circuit Juvenile Division. If the microphone can stay up top here, so we can ask Your Honor her thoughts on the discussion in regards to the process. Go ahead and stand up, Your Honor, if you would, please. Rosa Figueroa, you've been critical of particular case handling of agency cases in your courtroom. What of the process would you recommend to the lawmakers here that they address in their lawmaking?
It's a little bit difficult to just focus on one, because these cases are very, very complicated, and necessarily, the different aspects are interwoven. But I have to tell you that—I don't want to sound negative, but within the last two weeks, I have seen issues that have been brought up in the paper, displayed in my courtroom.
Such as?
Promissory safety plans on domestic violence cases, an infant not being removed, although the mother had been TPR'd and had never—or had lost custody of prior children.
TPR is—
Means termination of parental rights. So I know that we're on the process. It's, like I said, because it's child safety, and what do you do with a newborn that is being mothered, that has lost previous children? I mean, the need is so great, cases that are taking a month to get a police report that was actually in the clerk's office, had they just walked to criminal court. So you can't zero in on one thing, because in one case, it might have been that the investigation didn't happen quickly enough. In another case, it's that it took three months or two months to get services, and then the psychiatrist changed. So now that child that opened up to one therapist has to reopen to another one and tell that to a 12-year-old that has been sexually abused by their parent. And that's happening today. Today, every day, I have to deal with that in court. Or CLS lawyers, that because of the amount of work they have, they're not preparing their cases. Not because they don't care, but because they're traumatized too, because I can't tell you the number of times I've looked over, and I see a tear coming out of one of those eyes. So it's kind of difficult, and you have to really be there on a day-to-day basis and see what we go through to be—you can't analyze it and say just one aspect of it.
Senator Solbel, go ahead.
The judge is right, that each case is individual, is an individual case, and that unification issue. But I just want to tell you that this is a heavy lift, and we—the Senate has been working on this since August. I had a town hall hearing in August, and we heard what everybody said, and we're still this thing. And Judge, I know you don't want to be negative, but I don't want to be negative either, but this is a big topic that needs a lot of fixing. So let me briefly tell you what we are working on, so you get the whole picture. First of all, we amend the purpose of Chapter 39 to emphasize that the safety of children is the paramount concern of Chapter 39, establishes a new Assistant Secretary for Child Welfare, retains the current responsibility for DCF community alliances. We want to have more input by the locals, because our CBCs were sort of not becoming community-interested, so—but we keep the community alliances as they are. We have a very good one in Miami-Dade, active, and we're asking DCF—that's one of the changes that will come out—DCF to meet with the alliances when there's a change in the lead agency. Establishes a critical incident rapid response team to quickly investigate child abuse deaths where the child was known to the child welfare system. The investigation is to determine the root causes and determine how the child welfare agencies failed to protect the child. Requires DCF to publish on its website personal information about—not the personal information—removes personal information about all deaths of children reported to the DCF hotline. Before, we had selective information on the website. We're going to have all of the—no, it's a new website. We're going to have all cases given to the public. And removes the personal information. Strengthens provisions relating to safety plans. I'm not a fan of safety plans, to tell you the truth. Safety plans are what is involved for today. That's why I think that a qualified, professionalized workforce is so important, because regardless of a safety plan, a social worker and somebody who has an advanced degree knows what's going on, and knows what knows right from wrong, and has that critical thinking. Defines medically complex children—I think you discussed that issue—and medical neglect, and requires DCF and the Department of Health to have the medical expertise to investigate such cases. Directs that DCF investigate all calls of child-on-child sexual abuse. We've had that for children in the custody or under its supervision. Strengthens the requirement for DCF to keep siblings together when they're removed from their homes. We want to keep families together as much as possible. Extends the requirement of the R. Wilson Act, that children in the child welfare system attend a childcare program five days under the age of three. So at the age of zero, we're going to put kids in childcare. Expands the current relative caregiver position to provide compensation for qualified non-relatives who provide homes to dependent children. Expands the scope of the Child Abuse Death Review Committee. And the Department of Health review all child deaths reported to the hotline.
Senator, we can read the bill certainly. Senator, we can read the, the bill certainly online, the bill proposal, but here's the question, though. Will the budget sustain the proposals and the policy changes that are inside that Senate bill?
It's a very good question. I think it will.
You think it will?
I think it will.
Representative?
I hope.
You hope it will?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, we heard some of the proposals there from the Senator, it from the audience regarding oversight of the process of child welfare.
Thank you very much. My name is Mario Jimenez. I'm a family physician, father of four minor children, also Sunday school teacher. So I deal with minors on a daily basis. And I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Go ahead with the question, sir.
I and many medical professionals would be willing to help DCF. Will DCF consider the creation of an independent committee of citizens, qualified citizens, to help overlook DCF work and provide recommendations? I, I can tell you that I have been the victim of five different false accusations with DCF. And I am sure that this issue is key to the, to the, one of the main reasons why, why
Let's have the legislators address the idea of a citizens committee, a citizens advisory committee. We've had blue ribbon panels in the past, better than a decade ago. We've had agency panels come together. You've certainly held hearings, Senator, both community hearings and whatnot. Is it time for a citizens advisory committee? Would you support the instruction?
That question, I thought we have a citizens advisory council called the Community-Based Care Alliances that are in statute, that are volunteers, that are supposed to be the eyes and ears of your community. Are you familiar with them? Well, they actually are very active in Miami-Dade, and maybe, I know Cindy Lern is here, she's on that committee. And I think you should get with them to, to your concerns about the accusations that have been brought against you. So we do have it. In other parts of the state, they don't have it, and they don't want an active Community-Based Care Alliance. They, they have not activated them. They use the Children's Services Council instead to
I do want to bring this part of our conversation with the legislators a little bit to, to a point. And I'm gonna do that in a moment. But Carol, Carol, from your reporting, where should Florida be looking for best practices of child welfare systems?
We, we deployed Audra to Alabama during the course of this investigation, because over many years, we had been told, to our great surprise, given what we thought we knew about Alabama, that they had one of the best child welfare systems in the country. And, and that's true. They do. The reason that they have one of the best child welfare systems in the country is that they were sued back when you could sue, you can't anymore. And as a result of that lawsuit, a court monitor was put in place, and a plan of action was implemented. And, and many of the things that we talked about in this series that went wrong no longer go wrong there, and some of the things we suggested could be done better are going on there, including lower caseloads, no promissory note, safety plans. One of the things that Audra was told that we thought was fascinating was that when a child protective investigator goes out to investigate a report of, of abuse and discovers that a violent paramour, the child welfare word for boyfriend or girlfriend, is living in the home, big, big red flag is raised, and everyone has to attend to that red flag. We're aware of that here, and, and as we wrote in the series, Mr. DeGruy wrote a memo about it a long time ago, and, and he's been talking about it ever since. But those are still mistakes that are made with, with some regularity, where we may know that there's a paramour in the home, and we're aware of his criminal history, but we don't act nimbly enough to, to prevent that child from being returned to that household. Short answer to the question is, there are other states that are doing better. They have more resources. They have more generous general revenue budgets. And, and I, I think those are the places we need to look going forward.
Representative Frazan, how will we know when Florida's children are protected better?
Well, thank you for that question. Part of the reason why I use the word "hope" instead of "think that it will" as far as the budget is because I, I think you could lay out, and I do think that both plans, and then Senator Sobel has done an amazing job in putting together that very complex [inaudible]. You can always say, well, this is the plan, this is, this is the bill, and we will fund it, and I think you can. But if the problem and the systemic issue is deeper than, than, than a specific plan, then to answer, will 40 million solve it, or will it fund that bill, or will 100 million or 30 million fund it? That's where I use the word "hope." And again, I, I, I think that when, that in order to get to the point that you're talking about, Tom, I, I, I think, and that's why I have to kind of, especially we're gonna bring this thing to a close, I have to end with, with the fact that I think that the next evolution of, of this conversation has to be to empower DCF and the frontline to be able to make more commonsensical decisions. And by that, Carol quoted the fact that two-thirds of these cases have drug addiction involved in them. I would probably venture to say that the remaining third, probably close to half of them, have some sort of mental health issues associated with them as well, if not directly addiction. So to the extent that we can start recognizing that addiction is an inherent danger, regardless of any other telltale signs around it, recognizing that, yes, parenting is a right, but it also brings up an incredible responsibility, and if you're, if you're, if you're removing that responsibility because of your addiction, we should treat that, that addicted person, we shouldn't incarcerate them. But we certainly should recognize, especially at the youngest ages, that addiction is an inherent danger to a child. And to whatever extent we can empower the system to utilize that as an immediate sign to be able to remove the parent, and then put the burden on the parent to come back and demonstrate responsibility and cleanliness, because this concept, and the more that I learn about this, about these promissory notes, and I'm glad Alabama doesn't do it, I can, I can tell you, and I'm not a psychologist, but the heavyweight champions of liars are addicts. And to the extent that they're gonna come with some promise, that they're gonna get clean or something else, I think there has to be a higher threshold on whether or not they actually are, because there is an inherent danger. So we fix, we do the fix that we need now, we'll put some boots on the ground, but I think, and, and I think, again, I think the difference between now and four years ago, Tom, to your question of what's, what's changed now, is that we've put faces to these cases. They're no longer just a number. There are faces associated with them. And to the extent that this conversation is elevated, let's go ahead and solve some of these issues, empower DCF, empower the system to keep these kids safe.
Senator Sobel, when will you be convinced that the system works for Florida's most vulnerable kids?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Miami-Dade community who, who actually helped to bring about the change that we're actually, that we're doing. I also want to thank the Herald, who, that Carol and Audra, who worked very hard, including Mary Ellen Klaas, who covers Tallahassee, to bring this issue to the, to the attention of the entire state of Florida, to the United States. Child welfare is not only a Florida problem, it's a, it's a worldwide problem. I've met people from Australia who've told me about their problems, other states who look to Florida in terms of what we're doing. I'm a believer in the grassroots. I believe that you, sitting out here, know what's going on in your community, and you need to tell your representatives, your senators, your, the DCF, what changes need to be accomplished. We will also look at the Best and Brightest Minds with the, the new Florida Child Institute, which will bring all the social work schools together to figure out what is happening in our state and what changes are being made. I will tell you that I could not believe that Broward County had the largest number of deaths. I thought we had a good, good program up in Broward County, and I'm from Broward. And what I really found out was, and the connection that I made, was that we had the largest number of pill mills. There was a direct correlation between unlicensed clinics and these, these pill mills that were causing the deaths of these children by smothering, you know, a lot of kids were being smothered. I couldn't believe that was the cause of death. I used to think it was drowning, was the, it's still the number one. But number two was smothering. And why are kids being smothered? You could hear a kid cry. I mean, but if you're, you know, in a, in a drug coma, you can't hear a damn thing. So we have a lot of scams and schemes in the state of Florida. In fact, some, somebody was asking, like, what is snake oil? I said, well, that's what we used to sell here, and we're still selling it. Whether it's, you know, pill mills, or, or other types of things like steroids or human growth hormone, we need to get a handle on all the other auxiliary-type functions that are implicating our families and our kids. It, it's a complex issue, it's interrelated, but again, I want to say this, that it begins with the grassroots, because you know what's going on in your community. And there are many different kinds of communities in the state of Florida that have different needs, and that's where the information, that's where the rubber hits the road. And I, I believe that your input is the most important input, and that'll be the way we will lead to change and have a better child welfare system.
Mary Ellen Klaas. Harold, you cover Tallahassee. You have both houses represented here to your left, both parties represented to your left. Your thoughts on what you've heard about the policy prescriptions?
Well, I think one thing, just to peg on what Representative Frazan and Senator Sobel have said, is that, you know, legislator, Tallahassee's very far away, and it's really far from Miami. But these kinds of discussions and the feedback that comes from very engaged people like you down here really can make an effect. There's two weeks left of the session. And, and right now, the state is in a situation where it has more money than it's had in seven years. There is a budget surplus, and they're making choices. The question to me, and I think that the question those of you who care can ask, and can be asked of these guys, of legislators, as they're putting their budget together, is what kind of choices are they gonna make for children and going forward? And that is evident to me when we, we see the draft budgets between the House and the Senate, and they're loaded with a lot of local projects. There's things like a $10 million tower for downtown Miami. If it's easy to finance a $10 million high-rise in Miami, can you find $25 million to put money into services? That's a question that I think you can ask your legislators, there's time left.
Mary Ellen Klaas covers the state legislature for the Miami Herald. Carol Marvin Miller, thank you so much with the Miami Herald. Senator Sobel, thank you for joining us here. And Representative Frazan, thank you so much for your comments. Stay tuned, we still have plenty more here. Neighbors, friends, family.